Madam Secretary, are you ready?
Yes.
I'm waiting on one other councilperson. Do you have us all dialed? We're all good? All right. Madam Secretary. Are you ready?
We are ready, Madam Mayor.
All right, perfect. All right, at this time, I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we will actually start out with public comment. Madam Secretary, do you have any public comment?
I do. Can I call the roll first, Madam Mayor, if you wouldn't mind?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Getting ahead of myself.
Okay. Breckus. Duer. Delgado absent. McKenzie. Jordan. Bobzine. Abs, excuse me. Sheevy.
Here.
You do have a quorum of the Reno City Council. Roll for the Reno Charter Committee members. It's gonna be very rough for me to get through my comments. Yep. It has been a long day.
You recovered. It was good. It's good.
Rarely. It rarely recovers. This is absent at this time. Hicks.
Here.
Brown. Marshall. Albright. Capuro absent. Leader. Rossi. Holman. Boletta. Williams. Inos. Sandy. You do have a quorum of the Reno City Charter Committee.
All right. Great. That being said, send it back to you for public comment.
I have no public comment, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. We do. Clerk is off her game. We should start all over again. Madam Mayor, Pete Sforazzo would like to speak in general public comment today.
Wow.
Madam Mayor, I did hand out a handout. I don't know if anyone got it, so.
No. I don't, I don't have one.
I did attend the Charter Committee and I know I am speaking here today solely as a citizen and have not any vested interest in this either way, except that I think that the mayor is separate and distinct from the city council and does perform some duties even under the existing charter that are separate and distinct. But if the council wished to clarify it, I did provide a proposed duties of mayor, which is consistent with the Sparks Charter, which is my understanding was accepted by the Supreme Court as the mayor not being part of the council. And so I simply offer that for your consideration if the majority of the council felt that a change was warranted. I can speak from personal experience, having been mayor, and I'm sure that Mayor Sheevy has experienced this, that the duties of mayor may be in some respects identical to the city council, but in many respects they are different. And the mayor's time is of the essence. You are constantly going to meetings and scheduled nonstop. But above and beyond that, the public perceives the mayor as the leader of the city and as the chief executive, even though the mayor is not such under the charter. So oftentimes, the public will blame the mayor for not doing something when it may be the city manager's responsibility or even the councils. So I am here as a former mayor and as a citizen of Reno, and I'm simply offering this for your consideration. Again, I have no vested interest in which way you go on this, but it was my understanding, having read the minutes, that there was some possible desire for the council to consider a change in the charter. And this is a proposal for such a change. And I won't be able to stay for the regular meetings, so that would be the extent of my comments unless you had a question for me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. It's so nice to have you here. And all I'm gonna say, it's all, hashtag, it's all your fault. That's all I'm gonna say. That's what it is. Always comes down to the mayor. It's definitely a very different position, for sure. And I never would have thought that unless I served in this capacity, so. Anyway, thank you. Yes, I have, I've had both capacities, so. So, thank you. And you've been a county commissioner. You've been, tell me.
I was a city councilman first.
Oh, yeah, okay. City councilman.
Then a mayor, then a county commissioner, and chairman of the county commission, and now a justice of the peace.
Yeah. Amazing.
And currently chief judge of the Justice Court, so I do have varied experience.
You think?
Thank you very much.
You have a lot of experience. Thank you. Thank you so much for being here.
Madam Mayor, I have no further public comment.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, item C, approval of the agenda. May I have a motion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And Mayor, if I may, may I have a motion from the Charter Committee to approve the agenda as well?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous passage. Thank you.
All right. Item D1. Approval of the minutes.
Yes, these are the Charter Committee minutes. Everyone on the Charter Committee should have a copy of those from our July 25th meeting. I'd be looking for a motion to approve.
I have moved to approve the minutes from July 25th, 2016.
Have a second? Did Nancy unsecond that? Okay. Any discussions? Any changes to the minutes? Call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous passage. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Item E. This is open for staff. Staff report, staff presentation. Before we do that, Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment?
Madam Mayor, we have no public comment on this item.
All right, great. Take it away.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. For the record, Scott Gillis. This item, we have a couple of, at least initially, staff recommended changes. Little background on this. The Charter Committee has not had a full opportunity to vet these recommended changes. The reason for that is the issue that was trying to be fixed was discovered after the Charter Committee's last meeting, so I think it would only be appropriate after I speak to the recommendations from staff that the Charter Committee have an opportunity to respond. The changes that are proposed relate to the council's post-election duties and procedures. The first change is to Charter Section, first proposed change is to Charter Section 5.100 Sub 2. The Charter currently allows the city council up to 10 days after an election to canvass the returns of an election. That is in conflict with state law, which requires that it be done within six working days. So the proposed change there is to align the charter with the state law and so we don't get in a potential situation where we try to canvas results past that deadline and the secretary of state's office gets upset. The second change is to Sub 3 of the same Charter section, and the Charter currently says that ultimately incoming officers need to be sworn in at the very next regular city council meeting following an election. We looked at the deadlines for this year in particular, where the November general election falls on a kind of a later November date, November 8th, and our regularly scheduled charter meeting is the very next morning on the 9th of November. And at that point, swearing in officers on that date, under that meeting schedule, would require swearing in of officers prior to the county clerk certifying results and prior to the council being able to canvass the results. So the recommendation was to, from staff, was to line it up so that the swearing in would be done on the same date as the canvass, so you'd never have that problem. But the Charter Committee pointed out, and I think rightly so, that that creates a scenario where you could have a full city council meeting, a regular city council meeting, in which somebody who has either been termed out or voted out would sit through an entire regular city council meeting. So looking back on this, after the comments from the Charter Committee, I think we can move forward without making a change here and just keep being cognizant of how we schedule even year November council meeting dates. So essentially, staff is pulling back its recommendation and I think we can resolve this problem by simply just having a little different schedule in our November meeting dates. That being said, what we've also discovered is the schedule for this upcoming November is a meeting on the 9th, the day after the election, and a meeting on the 16th. Staff will come back to council at another time with options on how to change those dates to avoid the problem that we found here, and we'll have that discussion at a later date. Are there any questions?
All right, council members. Councilwoman Breckus?
No, I think that sounds fine. So you're recommending that, because we set a resolution every year with all our council dates, and then sometimes we get mid-year and we decide, oh, that date doesn't work. We'll change it. So between now and November, we'll amend that resolution?
Correct.
Okay. And so we won't, this mechanical change is not proposed?
The subsection 3 mechanical change, I think, can be rendered unnecessary by being, going off our normal pattern on November meeting dates.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Bobzine. Councilwoman Jordan?
No.
Councilwoman McKenzie? Councilwoman Dorr?
Fine.
Fine? Okay.
Any comments?
All right. With that being said, do we need to take a motion?
Madam Mayor, would you like to hear comments from the Charter Committee on proposed changes?
Thank you. I think we do have a few comments from Charter Committee members, as Mr. Gillis said.
Great.
This was somewhat, something late. I think this may be a candidate for something to put on future city charter committee agendas for some discussion, and we'd be happy, I think, to explore that and maybe bring that back, but that's just my thoughts. I don't know if anyone else wanted to add anything else to that. Johnny?
I didn't get this until last night, night before last, a couple days ago. I don't think this has been a new addition to the charter, and it just seems a little precipitous if it can be addressed in other ways to not discuss, because there could be potentially other ramifications that could result that we're not even thinking about. The committee hasn't had a chance to discuss it. We did ask for suggestions ever since January. I'm not comfortable supporting something I haven't even had time to think about, so that's just my thought.
John?
One of the reasons why we may want to keep it for a while is one of the principles of the first change, the Stat Department's third section, is this notion of the action of state law and charter. So in the Aaron in Stat's proposal, it is kind of this underlying issue regarding generally applicable state laws and differing charter. And Stat's proposal, since there is a concept that state law should be created, that's not necessary. It's not that the charter preempted by the general principle of state law, the fact that the state and the city attorney's condition of the city charter preempts state law. So it may be that there are policy reasons why you may want to change to the state law provision so you avoid angry calls from the secretary of state's office. So it's a matter of two days, I think. So is it, is this a question of we should defer at this point to state law, make that charter change? Or should, you know, handle this debate? I think that issue is one that could be vetted by the Charter Committee, that I see you thoughts on about that substantive issue, that prevention. Which is me, the reason why we should think about this before making that change.
I would agree with that. Go ahead.
Other comments from the Charter Committee?
No.
I think, my thought is maybe we discuss this again when we get to agenda item H as a future agenda item for our Charter Committee.
Continue it. All right. Do, would you like us to take motions on that, city attorney? For each one, or? No? It's fine? Okay. All right, then we're gonna move along. You guys good with that? Yeah? Okay. You're the boss. Not me, you're the boss. So, okay. It's all you. Mr. Scott Gillis.
Scott Gillis, for the record. So this next item is, I think, gonna be more of a presentation from the Charter Committee as to its final report and recommendations that it voted out of its committee and is provided to the council. One thing I will note, as we kind of go down the agenda here, for everyone who's not aware, the city council's already decided at its previous meeting that it's going to use one of its BDRs for a bill which would make changes to the charter. So that's not something the Charter Committee has to advocate for today. When we get to item 8, or, excuse me, item G, I think that is the opportunity at which council can give direction to staff as to what items, what ideas will be included in that charter bill. But for this item, a presentation from the Charter Committee is appropriate.
Thank you. And for the record, Josh Hicks, vice chair, I'll go over a few of these reports. I do want to just take a quick moment to thank all the members of the Charter Committee. We've had about 11 meetings. We've discussed a lot of issues. We've spent a lot of time, and I think everyone has been very active and involved in this, and I know I really appreciate all their participation. And I want to thank Chair Dis as well, even though he's not here tonight and left me his plan B for everybody. He definitely.
I think you're doing a great job. Want me to tell him?
Please do. I think he definitely came in as chair with some bold ideas for our Charter Committee, and I think that that has made our meetings very interesting, and I think we've come up with some very interesting recommendations. So I know this council has already reviewed the recommendations we've had and have actually voted on one of them. In light of that last meeting of the council, at our meeting on July 25th, we went back and relooked at some of our decisions and made some decisions on whether we wanted to recommend changes to those or anything else. So the main three, I think, that I would like to point out, you know, that I have a bit of a difference or some more discussion in our last meeting, was one of our recommendations was to make municipal court judges appointed rather than elected. I understand the council's already voted on that, so our discussion at our July 25th meeting was really about whether the Charter Committee should withdraw that recommendation or do something different with it. We ultimately decided to let that recommendation stand. We are certainly respectful of the council's decision to not put that in a BDR, but we do think that that is an important issue in this state that ought to be discussed, and we wanted to keep that recommendation standing so that at least it was a standing recommendation of the Charter Committee, and it could potentially be revisited in other forums or in the future at some point. So I just wanted to make that note on that issue. One of the other issues we had in there was the campaign finance reporting requirement for city council members. If you'll recall, the original recommendation required reporting every two weeks, and we understood there was some, there were some concerns about that from the council. We discussed that at length at our July 25th meeting, and rather than withdrawing that, we amended that recommendation and are now recommending that that be a monthly reporting requirement rather than every two weeks. So it's substantively the same recommendation, the timing is just different at a monthly level rather than a every-two-week level. The third element on there was the lobbyist registration piece. That was something that we spent a lot of time doing. We tried to do some modeling after what lobbyists do at the state legislature so that there's some public disclosure and transparency for the public, know who's lobbying on what, and that there's a way to disclose that. We did spend a lot of time looking at different lobbyist ordinances, both in state statute and in different municipalities and local governments. And we understand there was some concerns of that as well. What we decided to do and what we voted on at our July 25th meeting was to stand by that recommendation, that that go into the city charter as a lobbyist registration, but in the event that the council does not want to, does not see that that as a city charter issue and more of an ordinance issue, that we would recommend that the city council proceed with enacting an ordinance on lobbyist registration and hopefully using the language that we put together as a template or at least a model to start from in that process, and to try to get that done, if at all possible, by the election in November this year. So those were our three real changes we made. Our other recommendations still stand as they've been presented to you before, so I won't bother going into all the details on those because I know you've already had those details presented to you and they're in the packet as well, but those are all standing recommendations as well. I would like to have the opportunity to see if anyone else on the Charter Committee would like to add to that or make any other comments.
Josh.
Paul.
Johnny. No? Okay.
For the record, Paul Enos, Reno Charter Committee member. One of the issues we had in terms of campaign finance reporting, and I understand there was some concern over the length of time, having it every two weeks. One of the reasons why we wanted it, why we wanted to have it every two weeks, because we do feel that transparency is a good core value to have. And one of the issues we see in a lot of jurisdictions around the country, and unfortunately even in the state of Nevada, there's a reputation where it's pay-to-play with local government. And we know that that is something transparency fixes. And we think that is a good core value. So when you do have that reporting at, you know, regular intervals before decisions are made or in that same timeframe when decisions are being made, it does bring that sunshine into the process. And that really is one of the best cures for corruption and for that reputation of pay-to-play or quid pro quo. So I know there was a recommendation that maybe you wanted to have it on a quarterly basis. We decided to go to a monthly basis at our last meeting. So we're kind of splitting the baby there, but we do feel that transparency is a good core value to have and we think that's a good thing to put in the Charter.
Do we have other Charter Committee members who'd like to comment on our recommendations? Mayor and council there, there you have it.
All right, thanks so much. I'm actually going to start with you, Councilman Breckus.
Well, I want to thank you all for your service. I think, you know, I only attended a couple and if I could have attended them all, I think I really would have enjoyed it. I think it was just such thoughtful discussion and deliberation what I saw, so thank you again. But may I ask, Mr. Hicks, did you think about applying the reporting obligation to our elected city attorney or our judges also? Did you have conversation on that?
I'm trying to think if we did that. I don't believe, I think we left that limited to the city council members, is my recollection. Johnny, did you want to?
Okay. Okay, but one would, you know, presume, I'm sure the Attorney General, constitutional officer, maybe the Supreme Court judges, you know, they have report, they're tied to the same reporting cycle in the state framework that the Assembly and the Senators are, right? Are they? Does anyone know?
There's the general reporting requirement for everyone at the state level. However, there's a blackout level for the state legislators.
Okay.
For, during, and after legislative sessions.
Okay, and that doesn't apply to constitutional officers or the judges? Okay, okay.
So I think that was really part of our thinking was that the decision-makers were important. And the fact with the city council making decisions as frequently as it does, that that level of disclosure is appropriate whereby at some of the other decision levels, you know, they're more tied to the election than necessarily decisions, so that that would be maybe more appropriate to leave those in place.
Sure, and I support what you came up with and I appreciate you moving in that direction.
All right, Councilman Bobzine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to highlight the lobbyist registration piece. And I think this is a great example of both the council and the Charter Committee working very much in the same direction. It's going to take a little while to get there, but I know, Madam Mayor, that you're a strong proponent, I think the whole council is, of standing up some sort of lobbyist registration in ordinance and doing that. And so I appreciate the challenge being issued by the Charter Committee to us. And I hope that we can do that by the end of the year and have that set up and running very much along the lines of the proposal that they've marked out in their recommendation. I think they're heading in the right direction, so hopefully we can just, we can get that done. So just once again voicing my desire to see that happen sooner rather than later. Don't let the enemy be, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good. Let's just get something up and running and I'm looking forward to staff bringing something back sometime soon.
All right, great. Did you say, I didn't hear if you said you settled on what it was that you came up with, sort of with the lobbyist registration? I think we were kind of looking at something that maybe mirrored the legislative process. Did you guys come, you said you looked at several?
We did, we did. We came up with some draft language, which I believe is in your packet. And that came about, really, it was a bit of a mix, I think, of various different entities. I know we looked at some of the Southern Nevada local governments and how they did it. We looked at how the state did it. The local governments are actually much more extensive about how they define lobbyists and define exclusions of lobbyists, where the state is a little bit broader on that. So we ended up doing a much more detailed draft language, which is what we're hoping the council will use. If you go down the ordinance path, we're hoping that the council will consider using that as at least a starting point in those discussions.
Okay, great, perfect. All right, Councilman Jordan?
Thank you. We had asked when we talked about the, kind of what we believe the compromise on the reporting of a quarterly campaign contribution reporting, even during non-election years, to see if it might be easier to sync something up with the state so we didn't have to stand up and staff an entirely independent and separate reporting mechanism. Did you get any feedback on that? You were going to look into that.
Scott Gillis, for the record, I haven't gotten any answers back on that. Again, I think the response will likely be, that's not a feasible change for the Secretary of State's Office to make, unless, of course, it's mandated in state law that they set up a reporting time period for this particular body.
So in any modification, in any change?
Right, the system that's currently built is set up for kind of a one-size-fits-all reporting schedule each year, odd years and even years, tied to election cycles and reporting and disclosure prior to early vote, prior to the election, you know, in both the primary and the general. And I can just tell you again from experience, the system is not built to accommodate a different schedule for a select group of, you know, online accounts, online filers. It could be done, it's just for the Secretary of State's Office, it will be a new IT project requiring them to allocate resources away from other things to put that in place. So they would obviously have to do if it was mandated under, you know, Campaign Finance Chapter, that City of Reno council members shall file electronically and shall file on these certain dates. At that point, I would guess that the Secretary of State's Office would request for an extended effective date on the bill so they had time to make that change through their IT shop.
Have we done a, kind of a fiscal note analysis of what it would cost from a personnel and an IT and, you know, software and hardware, both, to do it? You know, what it costs us currently, which is virtually nothing, I think?
Once a year?
Yeah, once a year. And then how much it would cost to modify that and then get some extrapolated out figures on that?
Right, currently, there's no cost to the City of Reno because it utilizes the Aurora application through the Secretary of State's Office. If we were to do a change internally and create some sort of electronic filing application internally, we haven't looked into what those costs would be if the charter change mandated electronic filing or something along those lines. We would, when we submit the bill, the BDR have to give in some indication as to what the financial impact would be on us. And I think we would want to do that anyways, as part of due diligence, to figure out what it would cost us to prop something up like that internally.
Well, and I think what I'm kind of getting at is for us to contemplate it, even here at this point. It would be nice to have even some estimated figures on what that would look like. And if it was, you know, what we, I think, had somewhat settled on the last meeting was a quarterly, even during non-election years, reporting versus a monthly versus an every-two-week. I mean, can we get anything like that? I mean, is that too difficult to project at this point? We're going to have to produce it if anybody moves forward anyway, so can we get something sooner rather than later? Because I feel like I'm, I don't have the full picture sitting here right now.
Doesn't the city have some forms already that customers fill out online? I mean, I'm sure the city has that capability that they're already using. Aren't there some? You know, planning or Parks Department, for example?
We'd like to hear from staff.
I mean, that's my question. I mean, I always assumed that the city had online things.
It depends entirely on what you're going to create. If it's a fillable PDF template that just ends up being posted as a PDF on some page on the website, I don't think that would be very difficult. If it's an integrated login, entering data that's going to be reproduced for the public in a way that's searchable and they could drill down on contributions from specific individuals during certain date frames, that's a much more complicated IT lift.
And how does it marry with the state? So I guess it would be a double, and trying to figure out how it works in concert with the state's program, I guess, is what I'm trying to figure out. I don't know if it's a big deal. I don't know if it's a little deal. I don't know if it's going to take a ton of staff time. I don't know if it's going to take a ton or a little of staff time or IT time. I don't know.
We certainly could make some assumptions about how it would work and get you a price of what we think it would take, both from the software, hardware costs, and the staff time. At least make an estimate.
I think the starting point, Madam Mayor, if I may, would be the Acela program because we've invested so much in that. It's the state of the art. They might have a module that we just, you know, we've never looked for it. Yeah, I was trying to look online, but that would be the starting point. Maybe New World. I think we still have New World.
There are plenty of on-the-shelf products for this type of disclosure. It just, again, depends how customized you want to make it and what tools and fun stuff for the public you want to create. And that's going to ultimately dictate the scope of the project.
Well, and that was going to be my next question. Has the Charter Committee discussed what level of detail and data they'd like? So if we start asking staff to pull together some numbers, we kind of have an idea of what you want, what you're looking for?
And I'll go ahead, defer to you.
I was pointing to Paul first. Or Nancy, you want to go? Go ahead, Nancy Anne.
Nancy Anne Leader, I just wanted to say that the Charter Committee drafted a very detailed contribution, provision, from what we found, as Josh said. Boulder City and Las Vegas have very detailed, multiple-page provisions. And then we cut it way down when we found out that the council was looking at doing the same thing by ordinance. So what you have in this packet right here is very brief compared to what other places have done. And I also wanted to say that we looked at costs. And the way we were paying for the cost was through the lobbyist registration. You'll notice in that provision, it says fees. So we didn't ignore the fact that there would be some cost. And of course, the city clerk sits with us and helps us periodically, but we were looking at paper.
No, and I was, I think maybe we're on two different things. I was referring to the candidate contributions. I'm just trying, is that what you were referring?
Yes, that that would be paid for through the lobbyist registration fees.
Okay, I, okay, that's interesting. How did you come up with that figure? How do you know how much it's going to cost?
We didn't put in a figure. We asked, we figured that the council and staff would come up with a figure.
Okay, which is why, back to my original point, is we don't have an idea what-
There was authorization language in there to impose fees for the lobbyist registration. And that level could be decided by the council and staff.
Got it.
Paul?
Thank you.
We did have this conversation about, you know, how do you pay for this, you know, how do you pay for this system? And really, we do feel that that's in your purview. You're going to decide how complicated you want to make it in terms of programming and allow the public to search it. But I think just having that, you know, we're going to have seven individuals that are going to be putting this together, that can put it on a website, that can put it on a PDF. And really, as a member of the public and somebody who has searched through these things, you know, for the last 20 years, it's not really that onerous to be able to go through and look at the forms and look at the dates and see where those contributions come in. Either for, you know, we don't want to make that onerous to the members of the city council or the mayor, but we don't think it would be that onerous for the public or an enterprising reporter to be able to go through and search that as well. So, you know, if it's just, you know, if it's seven PDF links and you click on everybody and there's a list of their contribution reports from the last month, it could be that simple. I mean, it could be, I would, you know, as a taxpayer and a, you know, a fiscal conservative, I would hope it would be that simple to start with, spend the least money that you can on it, but still be able to give the public the information so we can bring that transparency in as a core value that I think we all, we all as citizens who live here and people who are in the government, we all want to have.
Which I completely agree with. I'm sorry, I'm not going to belabor this point anymore. I'll move on to the rest of my colleagues. But I was trying to make sure that when staff goes and pulls some numbers, that we at least have some idea of, even at a surface level, what you wanted to have on it so that we don't come back and all of a sudden you're like, wait, no, we wanted six more click-through, drill-downs information. And we're like, well, we only did, you know, X. So I just wanted to have an idea of what you were looking for.
All right, thank you. Going back to your point, Paul, or Mr. Enos, because you talked about pay-to-play, right? Wouldn't it be better, sort of, because, let's say you report everything, that still means that you could potentially pay-to-play. Wouldn't it be better that you didn't accept contributions within a certain period of a timeframe if you were voting on a specific item?
We did, we did have that discussion. And during the state legislature, it's really easy because they are in session for 120 days every other year. It's much different than a city council because really you guys are always in session. I mean, yes, there's different terms and all that, but you're always in session, you're always, you're always doing business. You're always making decisions because that's the nature of the job. So, you know, we talked about, do you want to have a prohibition for contributions? Or, you know, certain people, if they have business contributions, and we decided that just having that disclosure is a good first step. And bringing, once again, bringing that transparency into the process. Will it stop, will it stop somebody from doing something wrong if they want to do it? No. But then again, no law will. We do think having this transparency, though, does at least give the public that information that they would want.
And I would agree with you. I was just trying to figure out, is there a better way to really avoid that?
I wish, I wish laws solve problems.
Right, right, okay. It's good, though. I mean, I think we're getting there. It's good. Okay, Councilmember Mackenzie, I'm going to start with-
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the-
No need, it's all good.
The continued question that comes to my mind when we add different things for staff to do is what it's going to cost us to do it. And the campaign finance, are you writing in there that it's going to, in the Charter, that it's going to be electronic reporting? I mean, how specific is the language that you've put in there about the reporting?
We didn't put in mandatory electronic, but I think that would probably be ideal. But that could be left up to whatever would make the most sense.
I mean, campaign finance reporting could be, I could write it on a napkin and hand it to the clerk, so.
Well, I think, I think it would make sense to, and I know, I think in all our minds, there would be a similar process to the way the state does it. You know, they have forms that are put together where those contributions are reported, and I know you're all familiar with those. And it would be something similar to that so that it's uniform and easy for everyone to follow.
And so the question comes to my mind is if we're putting in there that we're going to do campaign reporting, then it falls to the council to generate an ordinance of how that's going to be done. And then the, we get the ordinance done and it doesn't fit what your expectations are, then we're back here next time and you're saying, well, we got to change the Charter again. If you've got an expectation of what this needs to look like, then there needs to be some definition in that Charter what it needs to be looking like. If you're just going to say, the council will come up with an ordinance to designate campaign finance reporting- finance reporting on a monthly basis, you know, so I think that if we're going to have language about it, we need to be a little more specific of expectations or else if we're going to draft the ordinance, we're going to draft an ordinance we can afford. And that might be the cocktail napkin to the clerk. So that's, we need to, we need to know what your expectations are. And if you're, if you've got expectations that you want met, then they need to be in your proposal. And then staff can truly dig down and figure out how much it's going to cost because everything we do costs money and we don't have a bunch of money to spend. And I, and I don't disagree that we may have programs out there that it's easy to do, but it's going to take staff time to figure out if we can with the program. It's going to take staff time to figure out what modifications have got to be done to it. So I, you know, I don't want to, I don't disagree with the idea of reporting. It's just that there's an expectation. We need to know what that expectation is, whether it's written into the charter or we've got a side letter to the expectation or whatever it looks like, so.
And I think to that point, the language that we had recommended for going into the charter is very similar to the state language. It uses the same, the definition of a contribution as for the state. And really, the difference is the timing piece, how often those need to go in. So I'm not sure there would need to be anything substantive done to the details of it. I think it sets out the, just like the election statutes in Title 24 of the Nevada revised statutes, it lays out the rules of the timing. And to the extent there was some kind of form or process that needed to go through that, I'm sure members of the Charter Committee would be happy to be participants in that process and help with that as well. But in our mind, it would be very similar to the state process. And I think that's what, exactly what our draft language said. The only difference really would be instead of the timing levels that you have at the state level right now, they would be twice a month. And now monthly pursuant to our amended recommendation.
All right. No further questions, councilmember? No, okay. I also like how at the legislature, they have, where you can pull it up online, you can see their pictures, know who they're working for. I think that's really, I think that's important so that people can kind of know who's lobbying the council. Councilwoman Doerr?
Yeah. Okay, so on the topic of campaign finance reporting, I was one of the main advocates of going to quarterly. And I just wanted to explain to the Charter Committee why. First of all, I'm very committed to government, the sunshine and more transparency. I think that goes without saying. And I think this is the council that wants to take that step, you know, to really be a leader in our state. I'm also by nature an extremely practical person. Like others on the council, I have a couple businesses and I have to do a lot of reporting for those. And one of those reportings is quarterly IRS reporting. And I'm also very practical in that we're all human beings and we have lives and things happen. And that's why I was not supportive of the every-two-week reporting and nor am I at this moment supportive of the monthly reporting. And I want to explain why. At any moment in time, some members of the council will be running for office and they have to comply with the state reporting, which is scheduled, some is quarterly, then there's the one right before the election, before the primary, after the primary, later, you know, they're offset sequences. And whatever we adopt will be on top of that for candidates. So if somebody's running for office, they already have to meet the candidate filing requirements. And they would also have to meet any new requirements that we put in. And those have to mesh up somehow. I think there might be one, maybe two, in a quarterly system that overlap. So a person running for office would actually have to do like seven or eight reports. You proposed essentially 12 reports, but somebody running for office will have to do seven or eight reports. So my thought is that, you know, change in management is challenging. The devil's in the details. I think that we should take this important step, but I also think we need to be careful. We certainly aren't going to have a electronic system up and running to begin with. So we would probably have, if we went to this frequency of reporting, we'd end up with an initial paper system to be followed by an ultimately electronic system of some kind when we could afford it, when we could do it. And I think that when you're looking at a change, and this is a very significant change for communities in Nevada, that you should take baby steps. I do. Because you always learn something in taking that step. You learn, oh, here's a problem we didn't anticipate. And I live in the world of unintended consequences. Every ordinance, statutory change, whatever, almost every single one has associated with it a place you got to go fix it. You know, oops, we missed this thing. We have to roll it back a bit, make a change or left change or right change. We put these things in charter. That means that we can only amend it every two years if we can make an amendment because the legislature has to adopt a change. So I would rather it be more of a recommended rather than required in the charter. I would like us to be able to set up the process, recognizing that probably if we adopt this, at least half this body would have to do eight reports a year anyway. So that's my thought on it. I think let's take a step forward. Let's be leaders in our state, but let's also be very practical. If it works, you know, maybe next charter or even as ordinance, we could self-impose more frequent reporting. But to be mandated at the front end to do a level of reporting that we've never experienced before, bear in mind if we go to 12, that's 12 plus the ones that the candidates have to do. So those are some of my concerns from a very practical basis. I just, I don't know if anybody has a comment on that. I just wanted to shift the conversation to a couple of other of your recommendations. So I want to make sure if you have a comment back to me.
Every two weeks because you take action so often. And as you move further away from the dates on which you have to file the reports, it becomes synced with the actions that you are taking. So I think as we moved, we felt that, yes, we understand that you have to file, but the reason why we chose to fight to get to 30 days was to say we choose to, to understand the value of the time connection between the contributions and the action.
So I just would like to respond to that. It may surprise those of you who are not in office at this time that contributions can take, can occur way before you take an action on something. There's usually a long lead time, you know, a development usually has a six months in the pipeline. Anytime in that timeframe, you could get a contribution. Six months after that, you could, it could be, if you want to terminate this, a reward for a certain action. So I think it's a little bit misguided to think that if you have this kind of close reporting, that somehow you're going to be able to tie contributions to an action. I just personally do, having been through it. On the other hand, you could take a person who's not running for office, like myself right now. And I mean, maybe I've gotten two or three contributions this year. I haven't sought them. You know, they might have floated in randomly, but to require me to do even a null report, a zero report that frequently, I think is a challenge. And, you know, this is my perspective, you know, from everything else because we are citizen legislators essentially. We are, I think she has three companies, I have three companies. I mean, you know, it's a lot to a lot. And we want, and here's the final thing. You want to be successful in your reporting. You don't want to make a mistake. Every time you report, there's an opportunity to kind of miss something, make a mistake, and then you end up in an amended report status. And to be doing that, that's why I couldn't even imagine doing it every two weeks, but to constantly be tracking this kind of information and making sure everything comes perfect. I mean, we set up laws so you can succeed, not fail. So that's just my thought is just, there's got to be some practical level where this comes in. If, I don't know if anybody else wants to comment. I just wanted to comment a few more things that you recommended.
The only thing I was going to say in the last...
Yeah, of course.
The fact that that's why you really think that electronic reporting...
Yes.
...are ways in which the systems that you choose to implement can decrease the burden.
The error, yeah.
And we're not naive. I mean, we have lobbyists on our, I think on our group here that know that, you know, we'll plunk a big check right before a decision's made. That's not, you know, there's consequences associated with that.
I don't know, I have many people who do it. I'm sorry.
Madam Mayor, may I ask Scott...
Yes, Councilwoman.
...a question? Trying to move things along here. I sense that there's probably a lot more discussion than we can continue to have. What do you need from us on this particular item today?
I'm just looking for council to decide whether or not it agrees with the recommendation and wants to include it into a bill draft or if it wants to modify what is recommended for a bill draft or say no thank you.
Or sustain what we voted on the last time.
Correct. This item, council has not taken a vote on the campaign finance piece. The one, the one charter recommendation that the council has taken a vote on is the appointment of municipal judges through the Missouri Plan-style process. Council took a vote and did not agree with that recommendation at the last meeting. But all these other issues, council has not taken a position on whether or not they agree with the recommendations and would want to include that, the recommendation into a bill draft.
So just to finish on this point?
Is it a formal vote or is it just, I'm trying to understand what?
The way we set up the agenda is that so under G, once you've had a chance to hear the presentation from the Charter Committee and ask questions and get feedback from the Charter Committee, under G, it's set up for council to give direction to staff as to what changes it would want to be included into a BDR.
Got it, got it.
But we don't have to vote today? We could like have you noodle on the cost issues or how to make this work for a vote later, the 24th?
If there's direction from council for more feedback from staff and/or the Charter Committee, we do have the possibility of coming back on the 24th meeting and making final decisions related to the BDR.
Well, I think you heard from Councilwoman Jordan that, you know, she'd like some more information. I just wanted to posit one other idea. If it was quarterly and we did want to do it electronically immediately and we wanted to use the state reporting system, I mean, there is a different kind of a way. And that is just to sync it right up with the candidate reporting so that it's in the same, I know that's an odd schedule, but it would be the same, it'd still be quarterly. I think there's a fifth annual report, so it might be five. It's four.
The current state reports are not quarterly.
Right, I think there's five.
So there's, the fifth report would be, or if you're, so a year in which you're running for an election, you would have a fifth report that is the end-of-the-year report.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So you might do the same schedule, the same system, just communicate with the state about, is it possible for us to also report? I mean, four of us, not me, but four are running for office already. They're already doing it. It would just be the other three, like in this example, that would also do it. I mean, it's just a different idea. It's a way to sync it up with the state, use the same exact forms, have the same reports. We would just report more often. So it's just a different way. And I would like you to ask the state if we could do that. So may I just speak to two other issues? So I don't want to take up all the time here. I just wanted to, I don't know if the Charter Committee spoke about the appointed attorney concept. I think you discussed it, but you didn't make a recommendation. Is that correct?
That's correct. We had some discussions about that and we ultimately made no recommendation on that.
Right. So I don't know if you watched our tape from our last meeting, but I supported that as a best practice. There's 12 charter cities, only two have elected attorneys, us, Reno and Sparks. And the others, such as Las Vegas, North Las Vegas, Henderson, it's Boulder City, et cetera, have appointed attorneys. And since you have one more meeting, I was wondering if you could do a little more evaluation, thinking, review of that? And I've discussed this with our attorney. It's not about him. He's doing a fine job. And it could be many years after he might be in office to take effect at a later date. But I just think in terms, you're the progressive people, you're thinking down the line, I would like to know if you think this is a good direction for Reno to think about in light of the fact that so many others do it, do it that way. So it's a difficult conversation to have, you know, our attorney sitting right here, but I still want to hear from you. You know, I was probably the most outspoken on it, but just, you know, I think it's kind of becoming a best practice. So it's just a challenge to you or a request that you consider it a little bit further? You still may have no recommendation on it. That's just fine. I don't know if anybody wants to say anything before I touch my last issue.
I'll just tell you on that point, I've been on the Charter Committee now for several years and so have several other members. And we've discussed it in the previous Charter Committee as well before we went in 2014. And we did not come up with a recommendation at that point either. So I'm not sure if there's any appetite among the committee, but John?
We discussed it and we chose not to make a recommendation. Different than no recommendation, isn't it?
To leave it as is?
To leave it as is.
Okay, so that's a recommendation.
Yes, so it's not, when we say we didn't take action, that means we didn't have a proposal to change something that would go into a BDR or a charter bill.
All right. And I would like, there was a lot of discussion and there were people on both sides of the issue, so on both years. On this one.
Well, it's just helpful to me because I didn't participate in any of the charter before, after, during, and it just seemed to be an evolving best practice in Nevada or not even a best practice, let's take that word out, but a more, more common practice for charter cities. So just wanted to see what your feedback was on that, so.
Seth?
For the judges. I think it's a lot different. Yeah, I think it's a lot different personally. I mean, there's one attorney and it's a member of our team here with the city. There's many judges at different levels. And, you know, I'm just asking the question. I, it did seem like a good idea to me, but I wanted to hear your input before we ever have to make a vote on it, you know?
I think some of our, just, you know, some of our discussions, in my recollection of it, was the appointment of the judges had a lot to do with the independence of the judiciary and taking some money out of those elections, especially because those, you typically have a very small world of people contributing in those races who happen to be the attorneys in front of those judges. And with respect to the city attorney, we heard from both Mr. Hall's predecessor as well as Mr. Hall's office on this issue too. And the independence there was a little bit different because that was more of an independence from the city council and an accountability to the voters in a separate way. And that's why I think we came down different ways on the appointment of those two offices.
But the majority of cities do it the other way, correct?
That's right. I'm not sure if it's the majority, but several of them, many of them.
No, it's of the 12 charter, of the 12 charter, nine do it, appoint. One, Carson City has a city-county, so they have a elected basically DA. And then the two that don't are ourselves and Sparks of the chartered cities. Every city doesn't have a charter. So there's a few cities out there that don't have a charter. And so I didn't research that just since we're a chartered city, just researched that. One final question for you. I didn't, I didn't recall, if you could just refresh us, what your final recommendation was on the ward-only voting? Because we're going to have to make a decision either today or at the 24th on that. And I just, I didn't, I would like to hear a little bit of your conversation or your recommendation.
We did recommend ward-only, changing to ward-only voting. And we also recommended the elimination of the at-large district and a creation of a sixth ward.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm done. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman. Secretary, are you, are you guys putting this in? Are we doing this? I want to make sure everyone gets...
Doing what?
An opportunity.
They're not pushing their buttons.
Oh, you mean to trust this week? Do you guys, I'll just keep, we'll just keep going around and around so everyone gets a chance. I just want to make sure that you guys are getting heard.
It's on and it's working. Just to note that.
Fine, okay, then I'm going to send it to Councilwoman Breckus.
Well, you know, I guess I would be in favor of us closing it out today and not have to come back on the 24th. I think we need to get Mr. Gillis moving through the process because it's a whole other process after this, right? Getting it down to Carson and then, and then we have the session. I guess a few things on the, on the question about the law, the... I guess a few things on the, um, on the question about the, uh, the law, the contribution disclosures to my colleagues. Um, today, we passed a, an ordinance, uh, the sewer deferral payment, and the implementation is wide open on that, you know, these certificate agreements. So when I hear, I want more details, I want this, I want the i's and the t's, you know, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't. We also heard an update on the journeyman electrician's ordinance, and it's the third time post-ordinance, before enactment, that we've had an update follow-up. So sometimes, sometimes we have a comfort level where we pass and we're ready to go, and sometimes we want the administrative, um, you know, backup. I think on this one, um, as my colleague, Ms. Stewart, said, you know, it is time to show leadership. Um, I'm comfortable with the every month, maybe we could go to every other month. I think this thing's going to get down to Carson, people are going to be, wow, Reno is going to be pushing the edge on this disclosure, understanding the distinctions of our different types of governments, and I think, once we get it in play, whether it's cocktail napkins or whatever, you know, PDFs, however, I think next go around, someone's going to be pulling it out, uh, and saying that we don't have to do with the S, the Secretary of State, uh, reg, you know, forms, because we've got it all dialed in, in our, at the local government level. Wouldn't that be nice? And I could see that. And also, one thing that occurred to me about that is, in your discussion about, well, I've got so many reportings, and is it convenience? You know, this may be a step toward being a big city and a big city governance. Uh, you know, I hadn't thought about that before, but maybe in big cities, and we're struggling with that in a lot of ways, we do have a lot of these other sort of, um, obligations of office coming in, and it's maybe, you know, sometimes someone in the last week said, are you guys full-time or are you part-time? And we struggle with that, you know, how much we, how do you measure that? How much we get paid, how much time we put in? But I think laying this on is a step that, we're full-time, big city, uh, these are big, we're a bigger city, and these are big city responsibilities and jobs and obligations we're going to put on ourselves. So that's, that's the way I'm going to approach that one. Um, in terms of the other changes coming in, or here, here, and, and the judge, who has so much history, spoke about, you know, our governance, um, structure, I think, um, this being the second time around, our charter revisions have themes. The first theme was the big lift, it was a lot more, it was a lot more drier, if that's the way to phrase it, of the administrative, the appointed officers and so on, and we're doing a little cleanup on that. The theme this time is going to be the hybrid voting, uh, we're, uh, cleanup, because we know we have a, an issue and problem there, and I think the sixth ward is also a move more toward acknowledging we're a bigger city and we need that, that next seat. And I think the third time around, next time, it is, we are teeing up to these distributions, um, delegations of powers, city attorney, mayor, um, mayor pro tem. And so, um, while Mr. Srazza, Judge Srazza came with the Sparks, which I think weakens the mayor, I think we're teeing up next time for a discussion of going strong mayor or not. And, and so I would be hesitant to bring in any of these changes at this point from, from the council that maybe move beyond what, you know, getting into some of those power changes or authority changes at this time. So that's, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. All right. Still trying to learn our brand-new system. Councilwoman Bobzine?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I, and I guess the way that I approach this is, and maybe it's because I'm, I'm, I'm too jaded with PTSD experiences from my own time in Carson City. And charter bills in particular, I think it's a matter of priorities in clearly articulating what it is we want when we go down there, because I can tell you, um, the more complicated you make something, uh, the more work it will be for us, the more work it will be for our staff, the more exposed we are to unintended consequences, I think was, uh, mentioned before, uh, in terms of the legislative process and what the final outcome is. And I would agree with, uh, Councilwoman Breckus that, you know, the big picture, uh, issue that we need to address, and I think everyone's on the same page, is what we're doing about ward-only voting. And some of these structural changes that we've been contemplating and discussing for years, and, and, and the Charter Committee's been looking at, a lot of these other issues will, will, will solve themselves, and the conversations will flow more easily once we get, uh, the ward, uh, voting situation figured out. So I'm just very cautious that anything we add onto the charter bill beyond that issue, uh, just creates additional drag in the legislative process to us solving that one big priority. You know, I, I'm totally comfortable with the quarterly reporting and the off-years. I think it's a very valuable conversation that needs to happen, and I would like to see the city of Reno, uh, take the lead on it. Um, I share the concerns about, a, a, and this is because I have a long history in information technology, and I shudder every time I hear someone go, what's the internet? How hard can it be? Um, and, and knowing, well, and, and also having been a user of the, the Secretary of State system for so long, and being so appreciative of where the Aurora system is right now, it's great. I love filling out CNE reports now, because it's easy. Um, not that that should be the ultimate test of whether or not we should do something, but I'm just hesitant to, you know, enterprise IT projects and what the costs can be. And certainly, uh, this council, this city has some recent experiences with, you know, you, you, you get down the hole and you realize, ooh, this is a little more complicated than we thought. I, I find myself, I'm not going to mention any specific vendors, um, I, I find myself wanting to convene an effort, and maybe it's through the League of Cities, some way to capture this conversation with the Charter Committee and involve them, to band together with other municipalities to say, you know what, there is a whole back year in the two-year or four-year cycle when, you know, as, as you mentioned, Councilwoman Dorr, contributions just kind of flowed in, and, and you wonder for a year what's going on, like, what, what, a, a, and that is an issue. Um, I will say it's not unique to, um, to local government, and, and certainly on the legislative side, because of the blackout period, I think that's pretty dialed, that's there. But I'm sorry, we have statewide elected officers who bring in millions during that year where there's no reporting, and they sit on such important bodies as the Board of Examiners. I mean, there are other areas where it's not just local government where this is an issue. And so if we can push that conversation for greater transparency in the legislature and find a way to play a part in that, you know, let's do it. Quarterly, e, e, every other week, and we can still figure that out. I, I, I'm not sure I'm at a place tonight where I can say, yes, this is exactly what I want to do, but I, I, I like the direction, so I'm, I'm, I'm kind of torn on this. I mean, I want to see us move the ball, but I also don't want to expose us to, you know, costs that we're not fully prepared to embrace. At the same time, I don't want to, you know, say that, okay, that's why we can't do this, is because we don't know how, know how much the costs. So, uh, that's just kind of my, where I'm at with this.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Jordan? I apologize, we've been here a long time, so.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long day. No, and I would agree with that. I think we're all kind of struggling with what the path forward kind of looks like and what the true costs are, and I'm going to say it. ADP. Nobody wanted to say it?
Ouch!
Ouch, ouch is right, and everybody thought it was going to be the smooth IT transitional, it turned out to be not that. So I would like to avoid that.
Millions of dollars, millions.
Yes, and it's, it's not that I'm saying this is going to go down that rabbit hole or be that difficult, or be that cumbersome, or that expensive, or that time-consuming, or that much personnel. We've just been burned. We've just been burned, and I'm, I'm fearful for that, for that reason. I absolutely am in favor of transparency and, uh, you know, government openness, I'm, I'm a little fearful of that, I have to be honest.
Okay. Councilwoman McCann?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilwoman Breckus brings up the fact that we passed an ordinance and, and with, without knowing what its, the exact costs are and, and how it's going to work in the future. If we pass an ordinance that we get down the road six months and it's not working, we can come back and modify it. This is something that it takes two years, and then if it, at the end of two years, we've got to make a bet whether the legislature's going to allow us to fix it or not. So, um, if, if we're, if we're looking, I mean, if we're looking at, at establishing a reporting system, maybe the Charter Committee's, uh, recommendation of making that a vague, a vague, uh, manner of, of recommendation is a better way, because we could start out with the PDF and, and then as we, and then go to searchable and, and, uh, and improve the system of, as we move along. Again, that's going to take time, the clerk's office, if we have to do a manual form and we, and she's scanning it in while we're trying to develop a system, it's going to take time in the clerk's office. So the less often we do that, the better it's going to be for the time constraints of her office, because she's got limited staff in that office. So, um, if we had direction in the charter bill just to establish a campaign reporting system, uh, on a year-round basis, and then we could develop ordinance to match what our manpower and, and, uh, financial abilities are, and we can improve that as we, uh, get systems online and develop systems to do that, then that might be a, an area that we can get, uh, some, some of your, you guys can get some satisfaction out of the, the reporting, and we haven't tied it up so tight that, so if it doesn't work, we can't go, we've, we've got to wait and, and hope that we can get it changed in the future, so. Um, and, and in that, I'm, I'm saying we don't have, we don't establish in the charter bill, uh, periodic reporting or anything else, we do that through ordinance. We, uh, we'll see how the system works and, and what the costs are going to be, and then, this, this body, the, the council would, uh, tighten that up if they, they saw issue with the, with the looseness of it, and I'm sure that, uh, my buddy Paul will come and thump me on the leg real hard if, if, uh, he doesn't think I'm addressing that issue for him. If I don't pay attention to him, he'll send his dad down. So I, uh, you know, I, I, I like the idea of having, uh, this transparency, uh, but I don't want to put a burden on staff, and, and I agree with, uh, Councilwoman Dorr that sometimes, uh, that monthly report, I've got monthly reports that I do, and I've got on my calendars, and that calendar goes off five days in advance, and I'm in DC and I can't do my reporting, and I've got to try to find somebody to go do the report for me while I'm out of town, and that, that creates the other problem we have, what happens when you don't report. So that's another thing that would have to be generated in ordinance, so, um, I think if we had a loose guidance from, in the charter to establish the, the system, and then we establish that under an ordinance amongst the council, um, that I could probably, uh, see us making it work. May not work to the level that some of you'd like to see it work, but it would, it would provide the transparency that you're looking for, uh, maybe not the, the minute before the meeting to see what we had for contributions, but, um, within a timeframe around the meeting, so.
We had a comment from a committee member.
I'd just like to say that the proposal that the Charter Committee came up with does not specify the form, it doesn't specify it's electronic. The only thing it says is that it's the same kind of parameters as the state report, and that it's monthly. That's it. I mean, it's, council's prerogative how often, I mean, you're putting forward the BDR, but, but you're going to have to implement it by ordinance no matter what. I mean, we didn't specify consequences or anything like that, because we felt transparency, that's the voters. Right now, the burden on the voters is immense to find out what's going on. So our object was just to get the information out there. I mean, I don't think you need to do anything to each other if you don't report. I mean, I think that's what we as voters allegedly would review to, when we make, but I think the Charter Committee is very sympathetic to the concerns about the onerous part of reporting. Believe me, I was on the school board for 12 years, I had to file reports, I had to file reports when I worked for cities as an officer. They're a pain in the butt, but, that's kind of, you know, goes with the territory. So we really did try to make it as general as we thought it could be and still have some impact. It really wasn't our intent to, you know, burden you down with creating a whole electronic system or anything like that. It's, you know, you work with what works. So I, just as one member of the Charter Committee, I just, I just wanted to reiterate that, that that's why we didn't specify a certain form, we didn't specify a certain way of reporting, we didn't specify that, but, and, and we did that because we know that there are all kinds of demands on your time that we're not even cognizant of. Anyway, I, I see where you're going, I think it was, I think it's very good, so, um, and I appreciate the thought that, that has gone into this and, and your hard work. I think it was, it's very, very beneficial, so.
We had, uh, an additional comment.
Did you?
From a Charter Committee member.
Were you raising your hands?
Did you want to, did you want to comment?
Sure. Yeah, we, we did have a discussion about penalties, and really, that's what led into the discussion of whether the city attorney should be appointed or elected. I mean, this, this is the issue that got us to, to that issue, you know, discussing how to, how to move forward and what happens if somebody doesn't, doesn't file, and that, you know, the city attorney said, hey, this puts me in a bad position because I represent the city council. So, I mean, it, it kind of led to, to a number of discussions. And while the method of reporting, we were very careful not to be prescriptive, you know, we're not telling you to buy a Chevy or a Cadillac. I mean, it can be a bicycle, but as long as it has two wheels, and for us, those two wheels are disclosure, and then once again, it's the time. And Mr. Marshall made the point much more eloquently than I, I can or, or, or will. The disclosure on that timely basis, and I was one of the advocates for every two weeks, I think it's important. I think it's important to be able to say to the citizens, yes, we are holding, we are holding our elected officials to a higher level of accountability than you are a business. And I know as a business, I sit down, I do my quarterly reports, and I do think it's important, especially with the decisions that are being made on an ongoing basis, to be able to say to the public, yeah, we can look at that, you know, on a monthly basis, instead of waiting a quarter after, you know, maybe some of the, some of the, the noise has died down. So to us, it can be a bike, it can be a Chevy, it can be a Cadillac, that's up to you, but the disclosure and the timing were the important pieces.
All right. Anyone?
We, uh, we're happy to answer more questions, or we look forward to seeing what the council wants to do. Do we have any other comments from any members?
No? Okay. Sounds good. Okay. So, any other questions from council? I think that there are none, let's, let's move on. Do we have to, Mr. City Attorney, do we need to take a motion? What would you like us to do?
I'd like you to make some, uh, decisions on what you would, what direction you would give, uh, Mr. Gillis and the Charter Committee in terms of, are you going to go forward with monthly campaign finance, yes or no? Are you going to go forward with the lobbyist registration, yes or no? Um, ward-only voting? So I'd probably go down each item that they have recommended and take a vote.
Okay, so we're, let's go with, one is, um, campaign reporting, right? Two, um, lobbyist registration, right? And, what was three? Sorry, so long, been a long day. Hybrid voting.
There, there, well, there's, there's, yes, there's the, the.
Ward only?
Not, not looking at the municipal judges piece, because it's already been a, a vote to not accept the recommendations. There's the, so the, the recommendations sitting in front of you at this point are the monthly campaign finance reporting requirements, which was just discussed. The next recommendation is the lobbyist registration piece that would be included in the charter, is the recommendation, um, or the alternative, I don't want to speak for the committee on this, but in the, in the alternative, put it into code before the November general election. Uh, there are some cleanup changes related to the definition of appointed employee and the city manager's appointment authority and council interference and direction, which we discussed the last meeting. Then there, yes, there is the ward-only voting piece, which would, to be clear, would say that.
That's three.
Correct, so, the, four, four, that's the fourth one. Um, and, and just to be clear, the ward-only voting piece is that for any special And, and just to be clear, the ward-only voting piece is that for any special election, primary election, general election, a, a race for a specific ward would be voted on only by that ward. And then the, um, the last change is the, the last recommendation from the Charter Committee is the elimination of the at-large seat in favor of a sixth ward to be effective, uh, January 1, 2022.
Okay, so that's five things.
Five things.
Councilwoman Doer.
Quick question on the ward-only voting.
And I'm sorry, can I just ask, I, I, I don't mean to interrupt you guys, but I just want everyone to start kind of being aware of time, and let's all try to stay within our five-minute time period, at least three to five minutes, okay?
I don't even think you'll take that. I recall that the, our seats are nonpartisan, but I recall the legislature had a provision where if only two people were running, and one got, you know, more than 50% of the votes in the primary, they became a person, that they, they, they won the election. Would, is that encompassed here, in that we're nonpartisan?
No, uh, general state law, uh, for cities would say that, at, in a nonpartisan race, if, if somebody received 50% plus one of the vote or more, they would be elected outright. Our charter, our charter still retains language which does, would always send two forward to, to a general.
Because I prefer that, but I just wondered.
None of the recommendations from the Charter Committee addressed that issue.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I took less than one minute. I wonder if you recognize that. I took less than one minute, I hope you appreciate.
No, good, good job, good job. I'm, I'm sorry, we're just trying to stay the course. So, Councilwoman.
You know what, I'm going to take the easiest one first. I think it's the easiest one, can we go ahead and vote on the lobbyists?
Now, the way, I just want to make sure, this is all defined very clearly, what we're proposing, correct?
Correct, so what you have in front of you, um, what was submitted to you for this meeting are the Charter Committee's recommendations. The recommendation the Charter Committee has made with the lobbyist piece is to include it as a charter change. Or in the alternative, pass it as an ordinance by, uh, the November general election, and put it into our code. Which for a little background, since I'm the staff kind of leading that effort, um, uh, we, I, I, right now, my schedule is to come back for ordinance introduction on that issue, which we've already discussed once on the first meeting in September, adopted the second meeting in September. So, before we get to October, it's in place in our code, and we can discuss the effective date, um, to give staff time to set that process up, but the schedule right now is to have that done in code by the end of September.
So, that was going to be, my motion was to move forward with the city putting it into code, so that the charter did not need to put it into some of their charter changes, that was good. To me, that's the easy one of the five, so. That's a motion, and, oh, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay.
So, I think the next, um, obvious candidate for discussion here is the, uh, campaign finance recommendation from the Charter Committee, which has been discussed here. The, the, the recommendation from the committee, uh, is, uh, the campaign finance reporting requirements on a monthly basis.
Motion. All right, so I have a motion?
I have a motion to do that, but every other month.
Okay, so the motion, do I have a second? All right. Motion dies. All right.
Mr. McKenzie had a.
Councilmember Bob's in.
Interesting question.
I'm going to give this a shot.
Yeah, go right ahead.
Uh, direction to staff to, uh, draft an ordinance for our consideration, quarterly reports, uh, during, uh, odd-numbered years. Non-election years. Well, for, right, for those that are trying to remember how this works.
It'd, it'd have to be annually.
It's, it's the gaps, it's, it's in years where there is only the annual report. Because that's the real issue, is the gap.
Years, years in which council members don't have the, the, the five requirement during an election year.
The state requirement.
But the only ones that have those requirements are the ones that are running for elections, so it, it can't be just odd-numbered years, because for the, for example, I, I'm on this annual.
Exactly, yes, yes, for those, yeah, for those, if, if, in the course of your four-year cycle, when the more regular state reporting requirements kick in, it would not apply. What we're trying to get to is for when you can go for a year with only one report to the state, you would have a city report on a quarterly basis. And I'll, I'll, I'll throw this out here, the intent of that is to, that moves it forward to, you know, stand something up, don't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, and let's make that point, make the statement that there is a hole in the state system right now, that we as a city can take a forward step, uh, in, in filling.
All right, so that's a motion, right? Okay, thank you. All right, so I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
And a motion is, and a second, discussion?
I, I, I appreciate the idea that we'd address how we do it and everything in an ordinance, but my question is, do we want a provision in the charter that says we will have a campaign reporting system in place?
That's what I think.
Within the city.
Where, to, to clarify this, I thi, I think we can, we can develop, uh, some directive language for the charter that leads us and, and buttresses that proposal for an ordinance.
Because I, I know that this, this council may currently believe that we need campaign, uh, finance reporting, but if it's not in the charter, if another council comes in that doesn't believe that, then they can remove it. And I'm sure that that's what our Charter Committee is trying to protect the city from, is that they want to make sure that, that, that there's campaign finance reporting.
I, I would agree with that concern, and I, I, I'm not going to try to wordsmith this tonight, but I think the proposal coming back would be a general direction to council to enact ordinance, uh, to stand up a campaign finance system specifically covering gaps in the state system. I'm, that's not very eloquent, but that's, Scott's, Scott's shaking his head, I think he gets the intent.
I renew my second to this modified motion. All right, so, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Next up.
Uh, the next one, I'll go, I'll go to the easy one, the, the cleanup changes, um, that the Charter Committee has recommended. We discussed these cleanup changes at the last meeting, they, they were, they were staff-recommended changes that were actually vetted by the Charter Committee and ultimately approved. So, uh, I, I can go into detail, council would like a reiteration of what those cleanup changes are. So, the first is to, uh, deal with some of the, I, I think, now, I don't want to call it, uh, misdrafting by LCB, but, um, the, we created the definition of appointive employee at the, uh, then the last, uh, session, that, which came from the Charter Committee's bill, and, um, the, the way it was included into the, uh, the, the codified charter language, uh, we had situations where it, it created some ambiguity that doesn't really exist with the actual definition. Um, so, in section 1.102, um, there was an or statement which created some confusion that the appointive employees defined in separate sections, when it's actually clarified in one section what it entails. We had another change, um, bear with me here one second. Section 3.020 subsection 4, the, um, the, the way that the charter was changed last session, section 1.1.090 sets forth the list of the appointive officers that the city manager has the authority to appoint. In the change, the change that was made by LCB, for, uh, for some reason, in section 3.020 sub-4, listed three specific appointive officers without the full list, so we wanted to just mirror the two sections, so we, we changed the line, we're proposing change language so that it would say, in accordance with the section that defines that full list, the city manager may appoint such staff as he or she deems necessary for the proper functioning of the city. And then the last change relates to the, um, provision in the charter that talks about interference in direction by city council. The charter language ended up limiting that, um, that, taking that limitation and applying it only to appointive employees, which is a very small section of all the city employees, and we've just clarified it so that it would, uh, clearly refer to all city employees, except for obviously, uh, the city manager and the city clerk. So, those were the, that was the quick version of the cleanup changes.
All right, okay, thank you.
Move to approve.
Second. All right, so if I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right.
And then, so the, the last recommendation from the Charter Committee is the ward-only voting, and again, to reiter, reiterate, the, the recommendations are, are kind of twofold in this area, one is that any election involving a ward-specific contest in the future, whether it's a special election, a primary or a general, it would always be voted on only by, by the voters within that ward, so no longer the hybrid system, but ward-only at both, at, at all elections for a, a ward office. And on top of that, the, um, the recommendation was made to eliminate the at-large ward and, and create a sixth ward. With that to be effective January 1st, 2022, uh, and there was a practical reason for that, it was to allow, uh, the 2020 census to happen, and then, um, which would likely trigger a redrawing of the five wards, um, regardless. So, the, the decision from the Charter Committee was to have that drawing of the sixth ward done at that time when the council would have to redraw the lines anyways. So, it'd be effective for the 2022 election, the at-large member would serve through, uh, the, uh, November of 2022 until that, um, election results give us a sixth ward member, that's the recommendation.
So, this would technically be in three pieces. Ward only, sixth, elimination of at-large, creation of sixth ward. So, this is three motions that you need from us.
Um, I,
As I.
I, 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 I think if, if, I think if the council agrees with the recommendations as to ward-only voting and the creation of the, um, sixth ward and elimination of the fifth ward, I, I don't think, we, we, city attorneys tell me we don't need three separate motions.
And we can do it together.
Yeah, unless there's different opinions as to, as to.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I don't think there's any, it, it's no hidden, um, information here that I'm, I'm not in favor of ward-only. I think the citizens have spoke, I think, the governor has vetoed twice, uh, he's still our governor, I suspect he will do the same if it goes through this time. I, I'm still, I believe in citywide voting for all positions, um, all the time.
So, my, my apologies, the, they, in that respect, the, these are different issues and should be handled with different motions.
And I also feel, I feel very strongly, and I feel different, because I've served in that capacity, and Mr. Dis brought up some very good points, and I really kind of had to do some soul-searching, because for me, the at-large position really fit well for who I am, probably my personality, um, sort of the things that I do well, and have those sort of relationships with people, and I could kind of relate certainly to the business community, and so for me, it really, really served that well. So, I think you brought some valid points when we talked about, you know, as a different role, right? It depends on the person. And I'm getting ready to choke on a lifesaver. I know, I've got bottles of water. So, I really started to think about it, and I thought, okay, for me, is this more emotion, because I've served in that capacity, and I truly know the difference? But for someone else, they might come in and they might be more, more versed in, in a certain neighborhood, so therefore, um, you know, not, I don't think one size fits all. Right? So, I, so I can kind of understand that. So, interesting, I, I see where you're going with that, and I don't necessarily disagree. I think I just feel incredibly different about it, because I've served in that capacity, and, and I truly know what that is firsthand. And you, you would never imagine until you are sort of in, in that, um, position. It's, it's really different to, to certainly be elected and sort of the process that you experience. You would never think that certain things might, um, have that sort of consequence, or just certain things you had no idea that you would ever even think are an issue, right? So, until you really are in that position, and there's some great things about being elected, and there's some not-so-great things about being elected. So, until you really, if you've served that, that, that capacity, you can sort of understand and relate. So, all right, so, who wants to make a motion on that?
Madam Mayor, I would make motion that we, uh, move forward with the ward-only voting portion of the proposal.
With the what?
The ward-only voting.
So, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? No. Motion carries.
Did you vote, Madam Mayor?
I did.
In favor?
Yeah.
Which way?
No, I voted no.
Oh.
For two. Yes. All right.
And I, I think that, I'm not sure whether the, uh, the, uh, s- sixth ward elimination and the at-large seat warrants a little more discussion. I, I think that, uh, I hear people talk about the at-large seat being a, a relief valve, if, if somebody feels that their ward representative isn't, isn't representing them. I, I kind of think that relief valve's at the election. We're getting to be a big enough city now, that our, our wards are getting pretty, uh, pretty large. I'm not sure if we're giving, I'm not saying we're not giving, but the potential to miss areas of a ward, uh, and, and are becoming increasingly, the opportunity to miss a, a specific area in a ward is, it's becoming increasingly likely, because of the size of the, the populations and the, and the unique situations that we're getting within the ward, so I'm not, I, I think that a, a sixth ward would be nice to reduce our, our geographical area and population that we're, we're, um, representing. But at the same time, I still think that having that at-large person is, uh, makes people feel like they, and there's many times that we have motions here that we have the at-large person make because, uh,
But you could do a mayor pro temp. I think that's what they do in Vegas. Right? Pro temp is the, yeah.
Or the vice mayor, I guess.
If I may.
I, no, and I, I mean, I think you have a very valid concerns, we're, we're considered actually a medium city, we're actually pushing to be a large city. So, I, I, I get that.
I feel that we are, really are struggling with that issue, and, and a lot of this conversation is reaching that. I've been spending a lot of time looking at the ward maps as I prepare to c- canvas and, you know, run citywide, and, um, and I think that we have some wards, maybe not ward one as much, but really, the land use is so diverse, crossing great land barriers like the freeway, just changed character, uh, growth dynamics. I think a sixth ward would really allow for better representation in the city at this point. Even if we were to, you know, move to a, a much more modest growth, you know, trajectory that we were on when those of us who came on in 2012. But with the, the projections of how they're going, how many land use, uh, issues we have all around the map, you know, city-county boundary issues, I think that sixth ward would really provide, um, a lot of assistance to us to do our jobs, but also, um, to help our citizens, um, you know, have that representation from the neighborhood level up. And so, um, I'm prepared to make a, a motion that we do go with the sixth and support that way, so that's the motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Wait, I had just a quick question. The implementation, I want to understand from Mr. Gillis, this would be six years from now, like, we're in 2016.
No.
Correct, the, the, um, the Charter Committee's recommendation is to have it affect January 1, 2022, and I, and I think the way that would work, if you kind of look at the model they did at the state when they did redistricting, is you'd have the at-large seat holding the office up until the sixth ward member is, is, is voted in. But you would know the lines of the sixth ward prior to candidate filing in 2022, so that people would know.
Like shortly after 2020, the census is done, then by 2021.
2020, and then really the work of taking that data and drawing lines would be done in 2021, um, with an effective date, um, for the lines for the 2022 election. with an effective date for the lines for the 2022 election to, to be effective January 1, 2022.
I really like this aspect of it because it leaves like what we have right now for quite a while. And it ties in with the natural census when by, I'm sure by 2020, we're going to have grown. And we're going to have to probably adjust the wards anyway because the growth is happening north and south primarily, more than east and west. I mean, there's some obviously east and west, but there seems to be more north and south.
Yeah, the charter, the charter dictates that after the 2020 census, if there, if any two wards are, have a 5% discrepancy, you have to, you have to redraw the lines.
Right, so we, I think we would likely be redistricting at that time and it makes sense that that would, that would be a, a good timing. And it also leaves things how they are right now for quite a while. I mean, this election is citywide. I just want to understand, in voting ward only, would it go into the next election, 2018?
Correct, correct. I should have clarified. The way that the recommendation reads is the ward only voting change would be, I think it, that believe the recommendation is effective immediately or effective July 1, 2017. So any special election that happens after that date, any, you know, the very next primary in 2018 would be ward only voting.
In 2018?
In 2018, correct.
So if you're.
So the ward only voting is effective immediately. The sixth ward elimination, the at-large ward would be effective 2022.
Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm comfortable with that plan. I think it gives some stability, yet, you know, it's forward looking, so.
All right, so I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. Uh, motion carries, four to two. Okay. All right, next up.
So that, that concludes the, the recommendations that have made to, been made today by the charter committee. Under item G, we've agendized it in a way such that either the charter committee could revise its existing recommendations and additional changes proposed from the, the council. I know Councilwoman Doer has circulated proposed changes. I think she may want to discuss that at this time.
Very quickly, if I may, ma'am.
Madam Mayor, can I have a point of order before we proceed with this item? For clarification on the last motion that was made for the creation of a sixth ward, did the motion maker intend to eliminate the at-large position with that motion? Okay.
Yes.
So creation of sixth ward, elimination of at-large, four two.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Next item?
Next item.
Okay. All right, Madam Mayor, I'll make this very quick. Oh.
Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, I put, I put this together and it was something that, and I apologize for not bringing it forward earlier. Sometimes you just think of things when you think of them. A question to Mr. Gillis first. Is the charter committee having another meeting, one last meeting to wrap up or no?
Uh, there are currently no scheduled meetings. I think maybe based on some of the discussion tonight, the charter committee may call itself into a meeting. If it wishes, particularly if, if council's having myself come back on the 24th for any additional changes at this point, the charter committee can obviously meet again.
Okay, well.
But nothing scheduled currently.
So what occurred to me was, I was taking a look at our organization and I realized that we have our internal auditor who is an appointed employee now, who now, I, I, my understanding is reports to the manager. And we actually have our internal auditor here in the audience, Emily Kidd. And I, what I wanted to understand is in most organizations, the best practice to me is having the internal audit function report to the council. They, they already have to get their audit plan approved by the council. And they do that, they put it forward, they advocate for it, they discuss it with the council and then they move forward with it. It really goes to the concept of internal control, separation of duties. And really what is the role of the auditor is, in my opinion, in this organization focused on process, procedure, you know, ensuring that those are followed. And so the, the other changes are really not changes. Number two says clarify administrative oversight, role of mayor for city manager, city clerk. Those are how they are today, but the words aren't in the page related to the charter. And I would add to that the internal auditor. And then no change to the city manager process. And I brought that up because I made a change to that section about the manager. So I just wanted to go through this really quickly. And I wondered if Ms. Kidd could come up just briefly while I'm speaking. So the idea, I've, I've put this in red and really what I was looking for was not to vote on this tonight. I was really looking for some input and that's why I asked if you were having another meeting because I really thought this needed some, you know, massaging if, if people think it's a good idea. What it would say is that the city council is the first line, shall provide for the appointment of a city manager, a city clerk and an internal auditor. If the council ever decided they didn't want an internal auditor, I don't think that they would necessarily have to have one at a moment in time. And that might be something to be discussed, you know, by the charter committee. Do you have to have one? I would suggest under three, that the internal auditor, rather than being an appointed employee, be an appointed officer. And the difference as far as I could deduce was that an appointed employee reports to an appointed officer, as at least the way I read it. And I, and since this position in my mind is a senior position, basically like the clerk, reporting to the council, they would naturally be an officer. And I'm just going to go through this real quick and then any comments. On the next page, it just speaks to that, that the position would be an appointed officer. And where we already have the mayor serving as administrative officer for the city manager and the city clerk, although it doesn't say that in this charter, she already signs their leave slips, their travel approvals and those kind of things. I would add the internal auditor and I needed a place to add that. So I just wrote what already my understanding is. And then I just clarified that in section three, it's the bottom of the second page, that in terms of, this says that, in this case, it's talking about the manager's entitled to be reimbursed for all expenses incurred in the performance of his or her duties. Well, that's not always the case. I mean, somebody is that person's boss and they're authorizing those expenditures. You're not automatically entitled to do whatever you, you think you want to do. Same goes for the clerk. So I added that on the, on the third page, right at the bottom. And that's all the changer is. So I just wondered if, if you would indulge me for a moment to just have our auditor just explain this function a little bit and how it is done other places. And I'm just seeking for our city to kind of reach a best practices also.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. For the record, Emily Kidd, I'm your internal auditor for the city of Reno. Good evening. So I came on board about three months ago and I did notice as well that there was kind of lack of guidance as to where my role would be reporting and directing to both functionally and administratively. So if it pleases the council, I've prepared some documents regarding industry standards within the internal audit profession so we can better understand where this function exists operationally. So as with most industries, excuse me, we all have a professional organization, right? So the Institute of Internal Auditors, it was established in 1941. It's an international association and it's our guidance for chief advocate of the profession, recognized authority, and we have over 185,000 members globally. So I've prepared some documents you're getting now.
And while she's doing that, I just want to explain that we only get a shot at this charter every two years, if, if that. You know, we may not have a charter bill next year. So it, it came to my attention, I know it's late in the game, but I thought at least I would take a moment and have the conversation. People aren't interested or don't want to move forward, so be it, but at least we've had the conversation. So, go ahead.
Right, so with the audit standards, what they have is they have, excuse me, attribute standards and performance standards that are set forth by this governing body of the Institute of Internal Auditors. It's a huge book, looks something like this. This is the guidance to follow those standards. I am a certified internal auditor, which is designated by this organization. So for me as a professional, I've always looked to taking these standards very seriously. So when I came on here, I noted that there wasn't any guidance in the charter or policies for reporting. And so what I did is I went ahead and created and issued for approval an internal audit management policy and procedure for the city of Reno. This policy number 315 became effective July 1 of this year. In the policy, it states internal auditor reports functionally to the city council and administratively to the city manager. Because there was no guidance, I felt that that was a pretty good place to start. If you guys feel differently, clearly you have that opportunity. Did everybody get one of those?
We did.
So it's a three-page policy. It's pretty standard boilerplate audit language. And if you have questions about that, I'd be happy to answer them. I believe it's in the policy section, part five of the management policies and procedures. So in this way, I don't know if, you know, this policies and procedures is wide enough to, to govern this or if you want to take it this other direction.
So I think the basic question is just, you've written a policy that says that you're reporting to the council, sort of programmatically, policy administratively to the manager. I'm completely fine with that. It's, it's just not specified that way in our charter. Your position is actually called an appointed employee. It's reporting to the manager. And, and yet this policy is different, which I truly did not know till right this second. So it's just, you know, whatever we feel, this is not a hill to die on for me, but I, I just thought I would bring it to the group for conversation, some input. You know, even if we don't amend the charter perhaps, although the position I think is called out as an appointed employee. Is that correct? Yeah, and it's called out, internal auditor is one, or it just says you may, you can have so many. And we've designated it as.
If I. In the charter, the council adopts an ordinance that specifies the appointed employees, so you have that.
And what about the officers? Do we specify those?
I do believe that officers are defined by the state.
Well, I think they're in the charter.
Well, they are in the charter.
They're listed.
But appointed officer has a definition.
Right.
It is a.
But what we've done in our charter is lay out who is an appointed officer. Yeah. But anyway, so that's the thought process. So I would just love to hear some input in whether this is a good idea, a bad idea, not timely, timely, whatever.
All right. Uh, Councilwoman Buckus.
I mean, leading in, you know, referring back to my previous comments about each charter revision having a theme. And maybe this could be, if you have another meeting, to more or less tee up, you know, where you think the next avenues of exploration should or should not be. Maybe we're good, done next two years and we could take a break. But I, I do think the next theme is going to be the checks and balances of roles, both in the executive and the legislative, or, you know, our body. So I think maybe it would be ripe then to bring that up. I will also say, having worked at the city of Reno, you know, many years ago, when the auditor function began and then that was one of the first positions, I think the woman retired at some point. And we just brought back the auditor position, I think, not this budget, but last budget. I, I think maybe a little bit of history because I remember at one point she did report to the council and then I thought she reported just to the manager. There was a shift at some point. So I don't know if you've got back far enough into, her name was Trudy Larson, I think, into her files to see those shifts. And maybe that would be informative to the council, you know, just not outside of the charter work, but just, you know, as part of your, your audit duties to let us know what the history of the position's been. So I think it's a little premature, particularly since we are kickstarting, you know, we're restarting up the auditing function again. I think I had an L item or a request for a memo on what the audit plan was for the first year. So I think maybe it's, you know, if they have another meeting, have them give us some thoughts. But I think it's really something to be teed up for the next time.
All right.
Anybody else?
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Jordan?
I, I would agree with that. I would like some more input from staff and maybe the financial advisory board and maybe some additional input. I think it might be just a little premature, not, not that it's not worthy of exploring further, but maybe.
Well, maybe just on time in terms of teeing it up for next time because it probably can't be too premature for this kind of things.
All right.
And Paul had a comment, I think.
Go right ahead. Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hicks, did you guys look at the, the mayor position through the, the, sort of the outline that, just as a piece for Ozabrona? Did, did you look at that and have discussions about changes to the?
The mayor position.
The roles of the mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman McKenzie, we did have some discussions about that. It was on our agenda, I think, several times about changing the role, some of the duties of the mayor. But we ultimately didn't come up with anything we made a recommendation on.
Okay. And, and one of, one of my concerns about that is that our mayor works well outside of what the, our charter outlines as, as responsibilities of the mayor. I mean, we actually had a group we were working with on it and they asked me what the differences between the mayor and the, and the council was. And I said, well, if you look at the charter, there's not a difference. But that's, that's entirely not true. The, the mayor has many more responsibilities and, and duties than the rest of the council does. And it'd be very helpful to the city to have those functions clarified.
And I think. I'm sorry to cut you off, but let me.
Don't shoot at me.
I know. But I also want to say in the spirit sort of of transparency for the public, you guys, to be really honest with you. The public believes that I have control all, all over the city and the council. And that is a very difficult position when I'm in the grocery store and I'm trying to explain to someone really how that works. And so many people say to me, wow, I had no idea. And so I think it's extremely misleading to the public on really the capacity that the mayor serves. And I know firsthand, it is extremely different, extremely different. Now, the Supreme Court felt differently, but then I don't know if any of them ever served in, to the capacity of a mayor, to be honest with you. I, I honestly, when I was elected, I, I sort of really truly felt that, okay, it's not going to be any different than it was for council. Boy, was I wrong. So.
Considered, you know, don't take. Position as saying we don't recognize.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I, I think that's my concern.
We actually try to think, is there, is there, is there something we can do to the charter to improve the way the city is functioning?
The distinction between the duties.
Well, no, no, no.
No.
Just, is there, is there something, is there a change we made to the charter that would improve the functioning of the city versus making changes to the charter solely for the purpose of distinguishing.
Yes, I would agree.
So we decided that we, that there wasn't changes that we could, that we thought collectively would improve the functioning of the city to warrant a change to the charter.
Except for the.
Interested in just making changes for the sake of making changes to distinguish the mayor from the rest of the council members.
But we did believe that the sixth, creating the sixth ward also distinguished that and was a move in that direction that would make the elected function, you know, they'd make the functioning better. So that was why we recommended the sixth ward and didn't do the other ones, yeah.
And what you're saying is the mayor would run citywide, the rest of us would not. That's a pretty big distinction. Is that what you're saying?
Well, and, and I, I think that, I mean, the reason that the Supreme Court said there wasn't a difference is because our charter doesn't distinguish it. We, we, the distinction between the mayor, the role of the mayor and the role of the council is not large enough to show that it's a distinctly different office. And regardless of how you run or anything else, that's not going to change. So, and maybe it's, this isn't ripe for this, for this charter bill, but maybe one of the things that our internal auditor can do is audit the mayor's position and, and come up with some guidance to give.
She's smiling.
To give, to give our next charter committee as to what the roles of the mayor are. And that may be something that we look at for our next charter committees to look at. Because I, when somebody asks you what the distinction between the mayor and a council person is and you point to the charter, there's not that much distinction.
And when you point to real life, there is.
Most people believe I run, I run the entire city.
Well.
They do.
Yeah, the bruise is on my back, I can tell who runs the city.
Councilmember McKenzie, point of order.
We had another comment over here.
Mr. Sandy.
We kind of briefly, we briefly mentioned the conversation that we had with not making change just for the sake of trying to differentiate. But I think the other thing that we didn't benefit from was the perspective that you just talked. It sounds to me like everybody's saying that in practice, there's already this distinction. We're not, we're not.
A new.
Distinction just to make it distinction.
Yeah.
What we like to do is make the charter reflect reality.
Exactly.
That would be, yes. Okay.
Having an perspective, whether it's the auditor doing it or whether it's the mayor himself telling us, this is my job. How do we draft this into the charter bill?
Maybe you should have another meeting and talk about this.
I, I mean, if I may, I think that's the theme for next time is this delegation of powers. And really the question is, do you go strong mayor or Mr. Sforza brought, I think, what is a weaker mayor? And so we need to have a const, you know, a char, a kind of a. And so, we need to have a, uh, consti-, you know, a char-, a kind of a constitutional, uh, almost a white paper kind of breadth of how that can, you know, play out with different, um, I'm sorry, it's so late, I'm, I... Right, I know, we've been here a long time. Different setups, and maybe the auditor, maybe the auditor does, um, look at these different models, and that's the first thing that's given to the next charter committee, or you all leave a, a guidance to the next charter committee also of what unworked, unfinished work might be for next time.
And I just wanna add, I wanna tread lightly with this because, um, I don't want it to be perceived as self-serving, that's really important to me. However, I do think it's important for someone in the future, and I think that's only fair, to be honest. So, if it doesn't happen when I'm elected, that's, that's fine, but I strongly urge the Charter Committee to please, please consider it, please, it's very different.
Well, I'm glad my proposal provoked such a robust conversation.
All right.
So, I think they are kind of linked, because I saw a certain few positions reporting to the council, and I did see the mayor as different and having different duties in real life, and that was my effort to cha-, to make these changes at charter was to better reflect real life, you know, the role of the auditor and who, who signs what, how it really happens today, not to change it to a different way that doesn't happen today.
And you guys all understand that, 'cause you're, I call, I call, I call us the bubble. We're all in the bubble, we, we know this process, we understand it, we're all related in government some way, some shape or form, but then there's this whole other city out there called Reno, and they don't have a clue what the city manager does, they don't have a clue that the mayor is the same.
So, and I never realized that until the interaction with the public, I had no idea how they completely think it's so different. So, again, all right.
Well, I'm certainly not asking for a vote on my item, I'm just throwing it out there in case you're having another meeting, and if you're not, you're not, we'll queue it up for another time.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. So, uh, where are we at? I'm so sorry, it's been a long day, do, have, do we need to take a motion on that?
No.
No? Okay, let's move on.
What, oh, wait.
Really? And you would be the at-large council member. Just kidding, go right ahead.
Sure we knew the best.
But, oh, wait, 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 let me just back this up, so now all of a sudden we're using it? You guys have not used it all night long, I've been trying to get used to the process, and now all of a sudden we're using it, and you're looking at me like...
The system has been on the entire meeting just for that.
Okay, all right, all right, either we're using it or we're not using it. Go ahead.
I could just do the, "Hey." So, a, a, a question from Mr. Gillis on process and mechanics and next steps, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming we're, we're wrapping up this agenda item, and I don't mean to spill over to our previous meeting where we were discussing BDRs, but it's hard to separate the two. And before I get to the question, now that Mr. Gillis is up here, I mean, just to wrap it up, obviously, we are immensely, uh, appreciative of the work that the committee has put in.
Big time.
And it's incredibly valuable to us and our deliberations in having this back and forth to try to figure out what it is we're going to do, um, with the charter this next session, and we certainly know, uh, from sessions past, particularly this last session, just how valuable the members are and the committee is going forward, and when we get to Carson City to be able to, you know, champion these changes, regardless of how many of the original, um, proposals end up into the bill, you know, hopefully some, everybody got a little bit of something. That said, uh, and this is maybe, um, at the risk of wanting to get a little bit too much in the weeds perhaps, I'm looking to staff to brush back if need be, we have gone through a number of proposals, we have tried to mesh a number of ideas, there was a lot of motions that were made on the fly, um, everyone needs to be on the same page for when a bill is introduced, because there's nothing worse, and, and it will happen, we try to minimize this, the charter bill goes down, it gets introduced, and boom, even before the first committee here, and I know Mr. Sandy probably has seen this and others with legislative experience, here come the amendments right out of the chute. In the spirit of trying to, um, minimize that as much as possible, can we, with the new system for submission of BDRs by September 1st, we can't just put in, makes various changes to state law, you actually have to give some concepts, you don't have to have fully formed language, at what point can we expect another, uh, bite of the apple, if you will, to look at the language before it goes in, uh, for bill introduction?
Uh, well, based on my experiences, you know, between that September 1 deadline date, which, you know, I, I can submit it before that as well, between then and, um, what is, I believe, the, the date, the, the, the BDR language would become public, I think it's the second week in November, looking to anyone who may know, I, I believe that's the date it would become public, they've moved that date up. In that timeframe, the, the timing with which the language gets finalized by LCB will probably depend entirely on LCB's staff schedules and their, their, their ability to work on this, and, you know, with their other priorities as well.
Okay, so from our end...
So, there is a, there's a timeframe where if, if I bump up against something with LCB staff where it's, "We're not sure what you want, we're not sure that this works," there is some time to come back and, 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 and work on that language to figure out exactly what that intent is.
Okay, so will we have another look at the total package for the charter bill before the September 1st submission, or will we have another chance to look while it's in process, "Hey, here's the update, here's what I submitted," and this may be the more workable way, council give, take another look at this as I'm in my conversations with LCB drafting, to make sure this is really where we wanna go, and, and I wanna do this in a transparent way so that, you know, the Charter Committee can kinda see what's going on, so that we're all moving in the same direction.
I, 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 we can definitely do before September 1st, I mean, I can, I can come back, a lot of this language is already, you know, been worked out, so I can come back to the meeting on the 24th with, uh, a preliminary draft of a charter bill, um, and then also, again, depending on LCB staff and, and bandwidth, um, come back at some point after September 1st before the, before the final language becomes public and, and get feedback.
With all due respect, we had a really well-drafted bill that went down last time, and it still got changed.
That's what I said, some of this is, can't be fixed, and I'm not try, I'm not trying to...
No, I know.
I'm not trying to point to errors or anything that happened in the past, just knowing that, you know, there's a lot of stuff here that we wanna make sure we're not losing track of as it goes into the, into the sausage grinder.
And I think, maybe, maybe one more time.
And I, and I agree with you.
And then on the 24th.
I, I agree, I agree with you, it, it was very difficult to start out the charter bill last time in five pages of amendments right out of the gate on already complex topics, so...
Yeah.
I, you know, my intent is to avoid that at all costs this go around.
Yeah, I mean, just, 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 just to flag, I mean, there's, there's, there's technical issues that might come up on another review, there may be some substantive issues that once they're in, and we take a look at it, we go, "Whoa, maybe we need to change it slightly," but we might as well do that before it goes in, rather than...
So, so August 24th, do you bring back the codified, I mean, you know, the draft of what we did today?
Mm-hmm, I can, I can make that happen.
And then we could maybe take a vote on the whole thing, if you want to, and then that's at least what we're sending up. Is that what you're saying?
Believe so, yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I think we can agendize it in a way that I could receive feedback from the council as to the, the content of that draft bill and change it if necessary.
All right. Okay, so, continue that, do we have to motion that? Nope, okay, so let's move, let's move on. Matter of fact, I'm, I'm so sorry, it's been long, so, Madam Secretary, do we have any public comment? No, okay, just checking in.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion in a second. Okay, where are we at?
We adjourned.
Nice! For real?
Yes, for real.
All right, thanks, you guys, I just wanna say thank you so much, Richard.
We need a, uh, we need a motion in a second.
Richard Brown, thank you so much.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Max got one comment before we adjourn.
I don't know whether they gave you a microphone without a cord, or...
Yeah, you got a special one!
A remote.
One thing that I feel that, yeah, you might be concerned with, that on the Charter Committee, not only have we gone ahead and looked at the situation, but the big standard joke has been, okay, if it goes through, who takes care of it? We always point to the city clerk, so something that you may consider, also, very seldom, or not very often, I should say, something comes along where you, such as the lobbyist, it generates revenue, so when you're looking for cost and stuff like that, I hope you would consider that, too.
We've got a motion on the table to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thanks, you guys, really appreciate your work.
Thank you for your work. Whoa. Big time.